Hi. I'm Ms. Gara and I think who else do we have here?
Hello.
Hi, hello. I'm trying to see how I can share my screen with you.
Oh, okay.
Here we are.
Oh. You went away. Okay, now I see you.
I shall be back.
Okay. Hello, Stephanie.
Hello.
My eyes are on the computer and also on my... We're supposed to be expecting a lot of rain right now, so...
Are you really?
Finally, finally. Everything is becoming... All my leaves are turning brown. They're like crispy.
I know it. Where are you located?
Low part of South Texas, Rio Grande City.
Okay, that's right, that's right.
We're about an hour away from McAllen.
Yes. I don't know. We were just down there. Let me open up my document. We were just down in the valley and actually we had to come back up, cut our visit a little bit short.
Okay.
But we missed it.
I didn't get right. Never done this.
Hi. I think we have four people here right now. And then the more that'll come, it'll make like a list and then it'll siphon through, so I might not see your face. And I don't know, you might not even see my face, maybe. I don't know how that works, but...
As long as I can hear you.
Yes, that should work fine as long... Yeah, sure. Okay, let me see. Um, I am trying to open up for you guys. So how many of you are in the classroom right now? Are you all in the classroom right now?
Um...
No?
Wow.
Anybody?
Launch meeting. Oh, what am I supposed to be looking at?
I'm gonna pull it up for you and then that way you can take it out. So I sent you guys, I believe, a couple of things. I sent you the ETS manual and, and to be honest with you, that one is the best.
Okay.
As far as looking for it as a, as a guide to practice with and to go through the rationale because they created the exam. So... Yes, so the...
The questions that are coming up right now.
These are questions here. And so it shows you the types of questionings that you'll have. You might have this scenario one where it gives you a group of questions that follow a scenario over a teacher or the students. And so you're supposed to keep that information as you continue to answer the questions.
Yes. I actually, I made a copy. I'm on question 21.
Okay.
On my own. And out of from 1 through 20, I only missed one.
Well, that's good. From this, from this particular study guide?
Yeah, the first question is, like, it has the competencies right there. This is the first question. Really long one.
Yes, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pull it up for you, but I'm also gonna open the Memetrix book. Now, you should have all received this. If you didn't, I will send you a copy for you to look with, to look over. Now, this book is really great as far as reading through it. There's great testing strategies in this book, which will go over the last portion of the exam, I mean, our time together. But this book is really great about the content material and practicing that information. Yes, it is. Okay, so there's going to be, and I don't know how many of you have taken the exam or how many times this has happened, but there's going to be a lot of questions on ELL students. So it's gonna be very important that you look over the PSYOP strategies, which are two different strategies that you could use. You need to be familiar with what they are to begin with. So you have to, at least in some form, read about them, which is why I asked everyone to print out the standards because what I like to have all of my students do is to have a copy of your standards out. For instance, these are, I just did a science one. These are the science standards. And so what I have them do is go through each of these. On one side you have, and I'll open it up here on the things that I don't have to hold this up for you, but you have a aside that has your skills, what you should be able to do as a teacher, and a side that has the knowledge base that you have to have. So if you'll look at it, this has a K next to it. That's what you should know. This is the skill you should be able to do within the classroom. So that's how you read them. They're essentially the same things. This is your knowledge base for the content and this is the skill that you should be able to apply while you're in the classroom, overarching oral language, yes.
So the one we need to learn for the test is the one with the K?
What's that? My name, what's that?
Well, both. The content material that you should know is the knowledge.
Okay.
But you also, the skill here is going to be choosing what PSYOP strategy would work best in the scenario. But you, the teacher, would have a whole bunch of different tools. On the day of the exam, they're gonna give you a couple. You just have to be able to tell skill why, your skill needs to be, this is the best one for what the question is asking for. And that's what we're gonna do in the second half. We're gonna look at some questions because sometimes a small change in wording or a question changes the answer completely and it's just a couple of words. So we need to be very careful readers of the question because really and truly, all of these exams, they're reading comprehension exams. Like, you could get the right answer if you could decipher what the question's asking for and read the cues. So we're, that's what we want to practice. But on your own, kind of like as a to-do list, later I would like for you to go through the, and any of the wording or the concepts that you're unfamiliar with, you would highlight. I want you to annotate. Like, we have our students in our classroom. When you have your students and you have them reading a poem or you have them reading an expository text, you want them to engage and learn from it. You want for them to underline or highlight things they don't understand or maybe things that they do understand and they have ideas about. You don't have to do the ideas part, but if something... Unfamiliar to you.
Yes, I said, "la madrina de fotos."
I don't know at all what this is.
Pero los padrinos, los padrinos.
And toss something off to the side. So then you... I would...
Espero levantarte para el padrino.
One standard a day is what I would do, or two standards a day, however many, but really focus on it. It's what we call a TEACH study. They don't need to be familiar with information. Familiar, but then for this exam, they're gonna ask you specifics. To have at least a base knowledge. Don't leave anything here. If you don't know what semantics mean, I mean, you do, I'm sure, but then don't have any shame about it. Who cares? Underline it, highlight it, and write what that is really small. There's no shame in it. That's what learning is. If, sometimes that has silly buzzwords, things that we know what they are, but you have to Google it and, oh, that's what that is. So no shame in doing that. It's something that we should all do. And for sure, if you wanna pass this exam, always take a standard a day and just do a TEACH study, highlight and, and look up different things within that page that may be critical listening skills. If you don't know what they are, just Google what some are, what listening skills, what active listening skills. Or you don't know what pragmatics are, look up some examples of pragmatics. So this is for the TEACH study. We might be referring to this later, but I just wanted to tell y'all that this is going to be what you'll actually be building your lesson plans with, what you'll be forced to track. Ad nauseam, you will track these, you know, because you will have to say, like, my student didn't do good on this part. This is the part I need to bring in more information with. So at some point, these will become kind of second second knowledge to you, like...
Yeah, it's just like with, with that test I'm doing, those quizzes. I had no idea what onset was, what rhyme was. I didn't... Between phonemes and...
Do you see?
Awareness.
Exactly. And a lot of those things, in college, we didn't go into that detail with some of those. And that's not, that's... People think like, oh, I don't know that much. No, it's because you have to know the whole scope of the entire higher content area. So there are things that we have to refresh our memory and relearn. So study.com is really great for that. Is that what you're using?
Yes, it is awesome. It's, believe me, it's a lot.
It is, it is a lot.
It's a lot. Some of it is very repetition, just in different wording.
Exactly.
No, de completa troca, like, I don't know. Every day, I take the quizzes. I review it.
Yeah.
If I miss about one, I go back. Okay, why did I get this wrong?
Right.
And I try and remember it. Then I started finally on chapter three today, but I only got through lesson five. But tomorrow, I'm gonna do quizzes, one and two, and part of three of what I did today. So it's keeping in my mind. I don't forget it.
Exactly, exactly. Because you want to continue to do that. So let me open up Memetrix really quickly so I can tell you.
I know, I know that in some of the questions, like, there's always gonna be two options that look like exactly the same.
There is. And the way to choose the best one is to look at the question. There is a clue in the question that will tell you which of the two good options, the best option. And we'll take a look at some of them. They're so tricky. For instance...
Yes.
A question about the best, the teacher choosing the best writing strategy. But in the wording, it said, "While the students were writing," and in the answer choices, I think it was... They weren't during writing. They were pre-writing and after writing. But if you didn't catch that the activity was during, just the word "during" the writing, you wouldn't have chosen the right writing strategy because the other ones were pre-writing and post-writing. So looking at the questions, and we're gonna practice going through some together, to look at the questions. What exactly, what are they trying to to get us with?
I know that I am here, but I'm in the E C through six exam, but they did ask me to join. So I hope that it's gonna help me a lot.
Yes, it will. And I'm actually working on one for the other because, like I said before, with the exception of really difficult math problems, most of it is a reading comprehension exam that you could possibly even pass another content area if you have some sort of knowledge and you carefully read the question. So I'm sorry, I just opened it up, the Memetrix book, and it went away here. So in this booklet, and I should've sent it to everybody, but if you didn't, send me an email. Here you have the PSYOP, the sheltered instruction. Read these, know these for the questions. The ELL strategies. But then at the end of this, I don't like to do this because you're gonna get dizzy. You can look away, I'm sorry. At the end, there is a really great section on test taking. Here we are. Okay, so... So you're already, you guys are already on top of the game because you're not scrabbling at the end. You're preparing, taking the time to put in the energy. So already that's half of the battle, is putting in the work, what you are doing. Pacing yourself, not doing too much until the end, obviously. But also, I want for you guys to have a positive, when you go in any test, I want for you to think in your mind, I know I have prepared, I have practiced, I'm gonna go in there and I have the tools I need to succeed. You have to have that positive mindset. But here is where really the interesting stuff goes down. Guessing is not guesswork. And I'm not gonna read this to you, but I do want for you to read this section. And I have it in a document where it's not, it's a smaller one, so you could take it with you and read it at your leisure, maybe like two or three pages. But there is a smarter way to guess at guessing at the, at the questions. And you will come across some test questions where you have zero idea because the content is about something so specific and you didn't know that, so you might, you might not have the clue that you need. And in that case,
No, I don't say it there.
You're shooting in the dark. And there is a strategic way to shoot in the dark. And it talks about that with monkeys taking a test. Monkeys will do better than us if they take a test, a multiple choice test. Because they don't put their own prejudice and bias when they're guessing. There's not a better way to guess than...
No puedo, estoy escuchando.
And then try it with some of the, with some of the test questions, because right now we're gonna read through some of them together. So test writers intentionally write an answer choice that will look right. You know how she said there's two answer choices? It is their job to put one that looks right. Always be on the lookout for the two and one that might be deceptive, or something that you might not be looking for in the answer. So monkey has no idea what looks good and what doesn't look good, so it will be consistently right about 25, 20 to 25% of the time. Meaning we guess and it's more difficult for us. So...
No pueden, no se lo pueden mandar al no.
Okay, so let's take a look at some of these. You have the domains, the standards. I think it shows you how many per... Okay, so this last part here, and this should help you for your studying and your focus, 67% of your exam comes from this portion here. So you really need to focus in your study on those standards, those last ones. Because that is where the bulk of the questioning is going to come from. So it's gonna be from the...
Which is starting on page two, right?
Yes, it's going to be four, five, six, and eight, right? Let me see. I'll show you right now.
I believe, yeah. I know it's at the very beginning.
Oral language, yes. So let me open up this.
Do you also do it for the science as well?
I have done it, yes, I have. Because again, like, as I say, a lot of it is, is reading and doing the work, like, with the study.com, just so that you're familiar. And a lot of it is repetitive, but they do that because science says, science says, the more you see something, it solidifies, it gets moved from your short-term memory to your long-term memory. And then you try so hard to remember it. So that's why study.com was created by scientists and researchers to help you be effective in your study. So smaller chunks of information in kind of a repetitive and scaffolding way proves to be more successful. So if you want, I can send you a link for study.com for those areas. And then you can start practicing with that. And we can schedule a study session to look at some of those other content questions later.
Yeah, I have the, I have done the, the history and the science and it's really good. It's really helpful.
Excellent. So here is standard... What is this for, right? This is where we begin?
Okay, so page eight.
Right.
Okay.
So for reading comprehension, and then I believe it goes from four to five. Or this is still four. We're still at four. So four is pretty lengthy. It has 21 sub-things. Okay. This is five. This will also be heavily tested. I mean, they're all gonna be tested. But 67% is almost 70%. So if I were a gambling person, I would make sure I knew those standards through and through, and that when I did my, my TEACH study, that that would be the one that those would be the ones I would focus on, especially if I wasn't a time crunch. Okay.
So the four and the five are for fourth grade and fifth grade, right?
No, these, they're just the standards. This is...
Oh, the standards, okay.
Standard four, so standard four is reading comprehension. So all of the skills, the knowledge and skills, and all of the content that goes with reading comprehension and helping the students become better readers, that is gonna be one of the most heavily tested. This writing one is gonna be the one, one of the ones that's most heavily tested. And one of the ways they fool you with trickery is by, you know, leaving out those little words, like, during the writing exercise, instead of like pre-writing exercise. So we'll go over that, some of that in a second. So four, five, I believe six is also right. Is six one as well, I think? Seven might not be one. And eight is, it's a... Oh, so it's all of them through there. Okay, so it's, it's just four through eight at the end. All of those four through eight, standards four through eight are going to be almost 70% tested. So... See if we're bolt up on those ones. The, the Longhorns problem? I'm sorry, guys, one second. Over there, there we go. Okay, let's take a look at my skills. And you know, to be honest with you, my students that have taken the seven through 12 from this study guide, not the yellow one, which I think is also a very good one, and you should read it too, but this one is made by the test makers. They use some of the test questions on the exam. Like, on the study guide, there's at least three questions that have come out on my students' exam. They're like, I remember this question. And they, because we had already done enough of the studying. So this is a good one to practice with because sometimes they actually use their, the text, the test questions.
This is the book, the Mometrix book?
This one is not. This is the one from the TS. This is the one from the state.
Okay, okay, I have that one though.
Do you have the Mometrix one as well?
Yes, I have both.
Okay, good. And you have access to study.com?
Yes, and I, yeah, I have access to study.com. I used to do 240 as well.
Okay. Okay, so I'm trying to find the beginning of the practice exam. Oh, is this it? This is the beginning of it?
Right, one more before that. There you go.
Okay, so I don't know if you guys, if y'all wanna have it open or everyone can see it on my, on their screen. Can you see it or not really?
Yes, I can see it.
Okay. So we have, so here we have one of the ones where it gives you the information above. And a lot of time with these, they give you so much that maybe it's, it might be confusing. You really have to focus in on what the question is asking you to get out from. Let's just take a look briefly over this. The overview, and then we'll look at that, what the question's asking us. So Ms. Lee, an English teacher, designs a discussion activity for students after they have read a chapter of a class novel. So after they read a novel, she designs this discussion activity. She provides students with a list of question starters that they can use to create questions for their peers. Then Ms. Lee has them ask and answer the questions in small group discussions. It's a good activity. Describe what's happened when, refer to a specific event. What do you think might happen next? So these are the stems that she gave them. This is a great activity, by the way, and this is also a great activity with your ELL students, when you want for them to talk about questions in small group discussions about, like, to come up with these, to give them on grade level or on their ELL level, whether it's, you know, beginner, intermediate, advanced or advanced high, you want, you want to give them an appropriate set of stamps. Okay, so the activity primarily encourages students to practice which of the following critical reading skills. Okay, so we're looking for an activity. The activity primarily encourages students to practice which of the following critical reading skills. Okay. Providing evidence from the text to support ideas. I don't think it asks them to do that. Sensing information from multiple sources, I would say now. Determining the effectiveness of the torque of devices or comparing the variety of textual structures. Is this about this question? The size and information. Describe what the author means. How was blank similar to blank? Describe what might have happened. Okay, so what are we thinking with this one, guys? I know what I'm thinking in my brain, but I just wanna hear your rationale. So again, she had them read a novel, a class novel. They read a chapter. These are the STEM questions. They're about author's purpose, a little bit, if you look at them.
What do you think, Mike?
This is about what does he mean by, when he says that? What changes, refer to a character, an event, would you recommend to the author? So the activity primarily, this activity primarily encourages students to practice which of the following critical reading skills. So which of these answer choices do you think best would go? And then we'll check the... What are we saying, guys? What are we thinking with this?
I would say A for the reason that if you, if, if you could say, "refer to," "refer to," and three, "refer to," "refer to," "refer to character," "refer to character." I mean, if there were, you know, I, I found this test, this question confusing because I looked at, okay, it's describe, what do you think might happen next? Okay, that's, okay, you're supposed to be, what will happen if? You have to infer. And then I'm like, no, no. I had to completely just, because I've, my mind blocked out, the word says, "refer to a specific event."
Exactly. Because you just focus on that, that first part of the question stem. But that specific event, the page number, character, event, page number, that's textual evidence, right there. That's the way we speak to it, to the students. So I believe you're correct. Let's see, if we click on it, it says
A.
A is the correct option because in all of them, and we were asking for a critical reading screen. That is a critical reading screen where to go back and they have to document where in the text they found their answer, where they, they're able to. And so which one was the one they put you in there to trick you with? Were you able to catch it?
The D? Was it D or no? I don't remember the choice.
Yes, because I, I agree with her because one of the, the word in D says comparing. And if you look back on the three, I think, kinda with, had he asked you compare? I think it's three or is it four? Can't remember. And it was like, oh my God, well, both are there.
Yes, but
Which one comes out more?
And it was every single one. So for the other one, where it said, "compare," they weren't all compared, because one was like, describe. Some of them were. And so maybe you could have, but you're right, the best. And like I said, there will be a good answer that might work in, but there is a best answer based on what is in question. Yeah. Okay. The primarily, primarily encourages, that was what makes it answer A. Because it encourages in everyone, refer to this, refer to that, and everyone, encouragement, and everyone, encouragement, like, you must do this. Okay, next. Which of the following skills are students primarily practicing when responding to questions one and four? Okay, so primarily, one has them described and four has them described.
Describe.
We have them, so when you describe, you're, you're.
You're summarizing?
You're kinda just summarizing, you're just saying what it was. Let's see, but you're not inferring because that's a step further. That's the information that I have and I'm making a judgment based on what I know and what I've lived through and this is what I believe, also with predicting. Um, what are we, what are we thinking? It's describing, are we having them like, let's look at the whole question. Describe what must have happened when, and then refer to a specific.
What must have happened? What must have happened? The question two says, might happen next? Question three, well, that just throws me off.
Yes, describe what the author means when he or she says.
What the author means. So basically, you're inferring. Wouldn't that be inferring what might happen next? What? You don't know what might happen next, but you're thinking, okay.
What must have happened, because we didn't know what happened, what must have happened to get us to where we were, which would mean that. Let's look at it. Oh, that changes it, guys. Describe what the author means, you're either.
I would say C or D.
It's C because predicting is in the front, we're talking about it in the past, what must have happened back then? What the, I think, maybe, well, let's try, let's see what is behind door number two. Answer C is correct because the task requires students to make inferences or to interpret the text. So because they make those judgments based on their reading, it's an inference. Now, which of these do you think was that the tricky one?
I would say D. I, I was looking at both, both C and D, cause it said inferencing and predicting.
Yes.
But guys, you really have to know your vocabulary.
You have to pay close attention to the, their wording because that's how they trick you. It's not for lack of you don't know this information, you could not be a teacher. It is a tricky test and you have to be very careful to choose the best answer with the question that they gave you and to very carefully read the information. Because as you noticed, it changed where we were gonna throw out inferencing because it's just describing. But the task itself is an inferencing task because of the text that goes with it. So it's a tricky question, it's a tricky exam, but if you re, if you go through it and you practice, you're gonna catch these easier while you're doing it. You're gonna say, oh, I know that trick. I've seen that trick before.
That's why study, I found that study.com is so awesome because it always leaves you with two. And you're like, ugh, you know, one word. And I, there'll be times where I get it wrong and I'll go back, it's like, oh, okay, now I know. I just don't say, okay, I got it wrong, let me go on to the next. I'm very stubborn. I say, no, why did I get it wrong? And I go back.
I'm sorry, Rachel, I have no idea, but I had you, I had you muted. Right now, I don't even know how that happened.
No, it's cause I ma, I put it on mute. Cause I was saying something.
No, you, you go back. I'm, I thought I had done it to you. No, no, no. So that's good that we see this and, and, okay, let's look at the next one. Which of the following question starters will best facilitate students' abilities to make text-to-text connections? Okay. Uh, there was a break in when I think it was three or four.
Texts.
Uh, sorry, it was blank, similar to blank, refer to something you have read in the past. So this one, two different texts, right?
Three.
So I would say B. We're, are we good on B?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's it. The activity is beneficial, this activity is beneficial for English language learners primarily because it develops elements of communicative awareness, offers explicit language instruction, provides an authentic opportunity for speaking, or encourages the use of word analysis strategy.
I would say A or C.
C. I would say C. It provides them an opportunity to speak.
Yes, so it gives them a brand language to speak over, like, so they're, they can, they now have the academic language to discuss some of the things. Gives them an opportunity. If I were to answer it, I would say C is the best answer. You know? Because it's not explicit language instruction. We're not there teaching them language instruction. Let's see. And the answer is C. Okay, so because this activity supports the learner by modifying the content, scaffolding the language, providing authentic opportunity to listen and to respond to each other in small groups. Remember I said before, this question stems like this are an absolute brilliant way to get your English language learners to feel comfortable in these, in these group settings where they're with um native Spanish speakers so that they can have those tools to engage on, on the level. And it's invaluable, really, and the kids are awesome. This, the other students are great and they're very helpful with each other. Okay, so back. Okay, so now we're moving on to another, this is by itself. I don't think this is with the, the thing anymore, right?
No, this is different.
So Ms. Woods teaches social studies to a diverse group of students, including several ELLs, English English learners. She divides the class into groups of four or five students. Each student reads, presents information in a different, in a different excerpt in the textbook to the other members of the group. Which of the following is the primary rationale for using this activity? Okay, so including several English language learners, she has them in groups. Students read, present information in different excerpts from the textbook to the other. Okay, so discussing expository sections improves ELLs navigation on text structures. Using prior knowledge helps ELLs make connections to unfamiliar vocabulary. I don't even see them utilizing prior knowledge within this uh little excerpt or like providing that. Provide a mean, provide a meaningful context, providing a meaningful context increases ELLs comprehension of academic language.
Comprehension.
Rehiring, uh requiring the use of multiple registers develops ELLs application of the appropriate register pool. Okay, I would say C.
Yeah. Comprehension of academic language, that was the key right now.
Meaningful context increases.
Meaningful context increases. Okay, let's see, so C.
ELLs comprehend.
Five. The correct answer is C because structured small group compass conversations allow students to practice even vocabulary in a way that's non-threatening. It's so important with their peers for them, like, and that's why the small groups with the question stems work so brilliantly with that because you give them the tools from which to engage and it's, it is invaluable to them to pick up new words and new um modes of speech that are common to native speakers where if you had it in isolation, that wouldn't happen.
No.
Okay. A teacher has students listen to an audio recording of a presidential speech twice. The first time students listen and respond to the full text. The second time students evaluate the tone, inflection. The primary purpose of the activity is to help students understand the verbal skills necessary to speak publicly, prepare for informal speaking purposes, collaborate on improving the message of the speech, or to com- compare different presentation styles for. So we're having them evaluate.
Yeah, that was.
Evaluate tone, inflection, and the pacing of the recording. So first we had them listen and respond, and then evaluate the tone of the speech.
So it's verbal?
Yes, I would think it is, yes, because they're listening to, we're having them listening to an audio and then we're once through, comment on it, and then the second time evaluating the tone of the speaker, not the tone of the writing per se. If it were a writing activity, it would be a different goal. But since it's listening to an audio, I would say to understand the verbal skills necessary to speak publicly because of the tone and the inflection, like, hi, hungry, you know, that's different, and they would hear the stop and the go. What do you think?
Isn't evaluate the same meaning as understand?
Evaluating, yes, sort of, you have to look at critically and to try to understand, to pick apart, to look at. A is the, because the activity described helps students understand the verbal techniques that are necessary when. How many kids do you guys have?
Um, zero.
You have zero?
Yeah.
I have two, but he's a, my oldest is a college student freshman and my daughter's thirteen.
But I have a thirteen-year-old daughter and you don't look old enough to have a college dau- uh son.
Oh, yes.
My goodness.
Forty-two, I'm old.
I, please, I, I have five and my oldest is fifteen and my youngest is two, so it's like crazy town. Okay, so. Which of the following words has five phonies?
So that means individual sound. I didn't know that.
Yes, individual sounds, right.
Stand?
Yes.
Yeah, because break has the E and the A together.
It goes together as one, so it has four phon- phonies. Yes.
And apple, apple, the P sound.
Yeah, the same. Yeah. Apple. Right, and.
It's the way you move your mouth, that's what, right, study.com, that's what they told you, the way you move your mouth. The way you, how many times your mouth opens.
How many different movements you make. Stand has five phonies. So here we are. Here you have in the word parts, and please review them because they will ask you the word parts. They'll ask you about a phoneme and, and uh, and they're not difficult, these are easy answers, but just if you didn't, you don't remember that that's what that was, it could be a little confusing for. What's another one that they, that they asked for the word part?
The onset and runs.
Segmenting, segment, um syllables, they ask a lot about syllables.
Parasalabic, they ask you the different ones? Okay. To motivate middle school students in language arts, a teacher implements learning clubs in the classroom. Students have a class meeting on an assigned topic. They then work in groups to research the topic and reflect on the information that exists. Finally, they add what they have learned to a blog. The design of the learning clubs best shows what the teacher understands, that the teacher understands the importance of which of the following. The design of the learning clubs best shows that the teacher understands the importance of the following. Blog, research. Finally, learn to a blog, okay. So pacing, placing students in groups based on their individual language arts abilities, allowing students to research topics that are of personal interest to them, developing student literacy skills through multiple language arts contexts, and providing students with explicit instructions to build their oral language. They're not even talking at all. That went out completely, D. But um, I would say that you're developing their literacy skills cause you're having them engage with different language arts texts as they're researching to reflect on the information that they learned and then giving yet another language arts text, which is the blog. Like, I started teaching in two thousand and three is when I took my test, but we didn't have questions at blogs and I don't even think I knew what a blog was in two thousand and three. Maybe I did, I don't think. But I would say.
C. Because she didn't place them. It doesn't specify that she placed them, so it's not a.
Oh, she, she, I didn't even notice that, but that's important because that might be a viable answer, like, oh, that would be, that, okay. But if she didn't place it, you're right, that's completely out, completely, right. Excellent. Okay, which of the following would help, best help students evaluate the phonetic skills of beginning readers? Examining the student's handwriting?
No.
Assessing students' sight word recall? Timing students as they read orally?
No.
Analyzing students' attempted spelling?
D. D.
There you go, so we are analyzing it because that's how they're sounding it out, that's how they're hearing the, the sounds of the words and writing it out. Okay. Which one was that?
D, um, nine, nine.
A teacher meets with a small group of students to read a book. Throughout the week, the teacher encourages students to reread the book several times. Which of the following is the primary purpose of this practice?
Reread is the key word.
Reread, right, instilling a lifelong love of reading, reinforcing the skill of letter sound correspondence, developing critical thinking skills about story alone, promoting recognition of high-frequency words.
I would say D.
I would say D.
Yes. The C says critical thinking, so that's not it.
Right, now, so we're just having them go through, I mean, we all do it with our kids, I did it with all of my kids in Green Eggs and Ham. That's how they learned how to read, but they just, you know, over and over and over and over again, they were just practicing those sight words that they had in there and eventually they learned to, you know, to read, but it's over and over through repetition, repetition. Andre, a middle school student, is struggling to decode unfamiliar multi-salabic words. The difficulty is affecting his fluency and comprehension. Which of the following is the most effective instructional strategy to improve Andre's fluency? If it's multi-sal-
Multi-
Multiple syllables like uh onomatopoeia, or you know, even multi-salabic, and it's slowing him down. So we want to use cards containing calming morphines to help build seg- uh segment, build and segment words, engaging in repeated readings of independent reading level passages.
No, independent, no.
Participating and peer tutoring to develop sight word recognition, practicing and presenting an oral reading performance to the class. And D, if you're like, are gonna embarrass him if he's having difficulties. Yes.
Engaging in repeated readings?
I would say A.
The B, no?
Struggling to decode unfamiliar multi-salabic words. So using cards containing common morphines to build and segment words. So, and, and that's what, morphines are word parts that build other parts. And, and the high school that I went to, we actually took that class only on word parts. We had to learn all these treatises, all the suffixes, because it was a medical school and in order for us to be able to deal fast-paced with the vocabulary, we had to take this class. So if I had to, what do you guys think? What are we thinking with your answers?
I would say A.
B?
Yes, A. Matt, what, but why did you say B? Okay, so let's take a look at my stuff. These, because although these activities are strategies that help include, increase fluency, they do not address his specific.
Oh, yeah.
Multi-salabic words. It was the more. Multi-syllabic words, it was the morphine part, the common morphine, which is the common word part that make up uncommon words, that was the, the link to the correct answer, but the other ones are fluids, they just wouldn't help him with the multi-syllabic, you know, words.
And that's a, a word that keeps coming out a lot, morphine, smallest, smallest unit of language.
The smallest unit of meaning, so it's a little part, so anti means before or against, anterior or, so all of those.
Like pre.
Yes, those little word parts that carry meanings. Having the students practice the common ones will help them become, be able to pronounce the multi-syllabic, break down the, the, the phonemes, the morphines down and to pronounce them in a way that's fluid, to understand them and they can comprehend the sentence without stopping their reading, because what they do is they come to a roadblock, they get help because they can't break the word down and then they stop and the. Okay, so twelve. Okay, so. A teacher provides students with a list of prefixes, suffixes, and their meanings along with a list of words including predetermined and indivisible. The teacher then asks the students to work with partners, use two lists in order to discover the meaning of the words without using a dictionary. The activity will primarily help students determine the meanings of words, which are the following. Context clues, structural analysis, visualization strategies.
No.
Or syntactical clues.
Ah, what is the tactical? It's, I would say B or D, it's not context clues because context clues means that you're getting the clue from the word when you're reading it, that's not what they're saying here, they're.
Syntactic suffixes. The way that the words are in a sentence, think of the way that words are put into a sentence.
Oh, syntactic. So I would say B.
That's it, and that's gonna be. Twelve, B.
That's a good way to remember it, syntactic sentence.
That's right.
Let me write that down.
Syntax is how the sentence is put together, how the words are placed together in the sentence. And so sometimes we look at that for analysis because the author specifically chooses the way they place their words to have more than one meaning, because, uh, it could be useful to look at, so, um, but in this case, what we were looking at, again, it's, it's just an extension of the one we did before, and we were looking at the, the multi-syllabic, um, what was the one that we did with the multi-syll-
Yeah, eleven, that one.
Eleven.
Okay, so the morphines, that's what we were looking at, that they, we were looking at the structure of the, the structure analysis of the word itself, the different morphines, the different, pre is before.
And sub.
And the E D means it's past tense, so breaking down the morphine, if they have that familiarity with the different words, um, it'll increase their fluency because they will be able to understand the content.
It's like the way it's structured.
Yes, that's right. Mr. Watkins, a fourth grade teacher, uses a reading activity in which he reads aloud a few lines and then has the students read the same lines, imitating his.
His word.
Yes, imitating. Yes, he stops occasionally to make comments in the text and to remind the students to read out loud. This activity primarily develops, and so we're looking primarily, it does many things because these skills will do many things, because killing more than one bird with a, one stone, but they want the primary and what, what you're doing is pacing and intonation, you're doing or- oral comprehension, word identification, reading fluency, or phonemic awareness.
I would say C.
What do you think?
He stops occasionally, so it's phonemic.
I, I would say, it's like what you were saying with your kids, when you read them, the green eggs and ham repeatedly, 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 repeatedly. Well, was it, you were trying to teach them, right? It was not what they, no, not to identify, it was their fluency, that way they memorize the word and they read it easily.
Okay, let's see, so phonemic awareness means that they are aware of the sound, the phonemes are the individual sound of the word. Uh, which, that, she's right, that that is the answer choice that's thrown in to trick you, I believe. Because of pacing, the intonation, and phonemes as a sound, you might think that they is be doing phonemic a- awareness, but let's see. What, what, which one are we?
Oh, gosh. I forgot. I forgot, I was too, I focused more on the question than the number.
Let's see, reading fluency.
They're thirteen.
Thirteen, because students are improving this.
Oh, it's.
And the accuracy, it's fluency. Um, that, okay, so here it is, for the D is incorrect because students are not focusing on the individual sounds but on the entirety of the pack, of the passage, so because he read two sentences or three sentences at a time and it wasn't, so like maybe word, one word at a time on a flashcard might be phonemic awareness, but since it was a couple of sentences sitting together and the intonation and the pacing, would be reading fluency. And we're still on, okay, so now we're moving to competency four, which is one of the ones that's more heavily, I think heavily, um, right, standard four? Okay. A teacher observes that a student has difficulty reading ten out of a hundred words in a text. Which of the following is the most appropriate determination for the teacher to make? The text is at the student's instructional reading level because it's, level because it exposes student to new vocabulary. So which of the following is the most appropriate determination for the teacher to make? So, reading level, the text is at the student's instructional reading level because it maximizes development of students' fluency. The text is at the student's frustration reading level because it does not sufficiently challenge. The text is at the student's frustration reading level because it is too difficult.
Well, he's reading what, ten out of a hundred words? I would say. What frustration?
But.
I would say D because if they were not frustration, it should only be, if they're reading that level, to my understanding, I don't know if I'm right, it cannot be more than five. Right? If they mix, if they mess up more than five.
Right. Errors.
Right, errors, sorry, I couldn't think of the word. It's too advanced, so I, if they miss up ten, i- it's already too advanced.
Level, yeah.
Because instructional would be ni- like ninety-four and up or, no, I'm confused already. I know that for the independent, it would be ninety-five and up, right? Like them reading ninety-five percent and up?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so instructional, it wouldn't be it because he's only reading ten out of a hundred.
Which of the following is the most appropriate determination for the teacher to make? It's not that they, it's not, we're not, it's not being very instructive, well, reading ten out of a hundred words.
And this, this question was on the test, except the number's different.
Do you see, and they do that, they just do like a, like a little bit, the little switcheroo because they, you know, these questions have been tried and intrued and tested or whatever, so they were, so let's see what, what they say, what, what is our guess and what is our rationale behind it, because we're saying ten errors is too much. Asked it be.
D.
D, you're correct.
Yeah, two out of five, two to five, I thought it was five, two, two to five.
Okay, so.
Yeah, because I think I've seen it on the test, but using like five out of twenty words.
Yes, yes.
Yes, I think I've seen it like that.
I think five out of twenty?
They shouldn't get more, if it was five out of twenty, they should not get more than one wrong.
One wrong, yeah, that's why, a ratio, like they could only get one wrong, you know.
That answer should have been, uh, something like what we're answering right now. And I think that's, that question, Rachel, I think that's right, I think that's the same question I saw, it was just.
Yes.
Yeah. How was it reading again, do you, how, how did you say yes?
Five out of twenty.
I think it said something five out of twenty, like instead of ten out of a hundred, he was reading five out of twenty words.
And the reason I remember that was because I was counting.
You know you're gonna have to do it on the English exam.
Oh, my god.
Okay. Um, which of the following strategies will be most successful in identifying students' independent, instructional, and frustration reading levels? Okay, which of the following strategies? So testing students' recall of new vocabulary after they read a selected test, recording students' miscues as they read orally from a selected text, noticing students' thoughts as they think aloud about a selected text, and studying students' facial expressions while they read orally from a selected text. I have not mastered.
D is out.
Yeah, D's out, uh, what do you think, guys?
A?
Uh, uh, requiring student miscues, teaching students recall, I, I would say B.
Recording students' miscues as.
Oh, yes, it's Bs.
Yeah, so, uh, recording their errors.
Yes, because they read it to you.
Yeah, so it's actually, um, some schools, most of them do, the teachers, they, at the elementary levels will have a passage and they meet with them individually to check their fluency and they have them read and every time they make a mistake, they note it there, and actually, in some cases, when they do the reading intervention, you'll move on until they get, they reach that mastery level, you can't move on to the next lesson with those students until they, they're at that, that instructional level where they missed less than five.
Yes, because I.
That program in elementary where you pull out the kid and they read a passage, can't remember the name of that program, haven't been.
Read naturally.
Read naturally.
Yes, because I, 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 I work in an elementary school as a teacher assistant, so.
So you're familiar with that, so, so.
Yes.
Marking the miscues or the, no one likes to call them errors, the miscues were.
Yes, we actually like, and then they'll, they, they can go to another level until they master that one.
Until they reach that master.
Yeah.
Exactly, so.
Yeah.
Kids memorize it, I, I remember kids.
I do, whatever you have.
By Thursday or Friday, I'm in solo.
Yeah.
Okay, so the recording and analyzing students' miscues is an excellent indicator for identifying reader, uh, reading levels. Teachers need to determine students' reading level, and we need to work here as a student while reading and plan instruction accordingly. So if you know the groups at the frustration level, you can make an adjustment with your text or whatever and, um. So are y'all in the classroom or you're not in the classroom yet?
Um, right now, in my, no, I'm not in the classroom, but I do ha- I work with, uh, Spanish speaking students.
Oh, okay.
So I help a teacher like to test them.
Wow.
So I get to see, you know, to work with them with the, uh, star questions and everything, so I get to see like a lot of those questions, when you take the test, like, it connects, like, it's like, oh my god, like, all the information that I know, it helps.
It really.
It helps a lot.
The questions, so sad, but you know how they make this all tricky, they do that for the star for our kids too. It, it, it's, sometimes they know it, but there's a little something just with the question and they're not as careful as us, we're not as careful as we should be, them menos, menos.
Just, just like you said at the beginning, that like, uh, sometimes you have to go in as, you know, positive, that's what I told them, so I'm like, I need to tell myself that, like, when I go in and take the test.
You are going to be successful, you're going to practice, you are going to have all of the skills, you will be aware of all of the pitfalls and the tricks that they're gonna try to lure you with.
Yes.
You're gonna, you're gonna get it this time, I know it, I have a good.
Thank you.
Ms. Lovett completes a Venn diagram as she explains similarities and differences between two versions of the Three Little Pigs. She then has students write, evaluate, write evaluative statements describing the major differences between the two versions. Through the lesson, Ms. Lovett primarily demonstrates and understanding the importance of which of the following? So we're doing similarities and differences, two different text versions of the little pigs. Excuse me, he has the students write evaluative statements describing major differences. He has them focus on the differences afterwards instead of the similarities, right? Allow students an opportunity to independently apply comprehension skills, enhancing students' comprehension by developing their listening skills, improving students' comprehension by linking their prior knowledge to the text, providing students with guided practice of comprehension strategies. Okay, so she completes a Venn diagram where she shows them similarities and differences and then she, she shows it to them and then has them make a statement, kind of describing what they just, what they just came to, what conclusions they came to about the differences, so they're looking more in depth about one, so. For me, that is not independent work. Um, she's helping them developing listening skills, the prior knowledge, which ones would you guys say would be the best?
The C?
I would choose D. Practice. Is the key word.
Yes, because she's, she's doing, she is completing the Venn diagram, so there's two ways you could do this activity, the teacher could, after she reads, say, okay, here's a handout of a Venn diagram, go find the similarities and differences and fill out the diagram. They're gonna go and they're not gonna know what to do, they're gonna go and say, even if they know similarities and differences, they'll sit there, but if you guide them, and we said, okay, guys, everybody, let, let's do this one, let's do the first one and it's this. And then afterwards, you have them go a little bit more and look at the differences, similarities are a little bit easier to identify and get to, have them make an evaluative, they evaluate it a yes or no, makes it a little bit more of a comprehension strategy. Right? So I think that D might be the best answer, Rachel, what are you thinking?
I'm, I, you see how I get confused with two always, this happens, like, I go with C, but then after hearing the explanation, like, I know why it's D.
Right.
You know, like, because I was choosing C because it says that they were linking their prior knowledge, but actually, she was the one who, who did the Venn diagram.
Right, she's doing the Venn diagram, and that's why, Rachel, what I want for you to do, when you make your choice, say, okay, I made my choice, but did they trick me with a fake answer and go back and look at the question?
Yes.
With the fake answer, because they always are gonna provide you with another answer that has something maybe there, a word that links it and makes it look better than, than what it is.
Um, yes.
Okay, let's just make sure, let me make sure that, okay, Ms. Lovett. D is correct, uh, because she's modeling them through a study and then having them apply at one of the, uh, she could have said, now making evaluative statement about the similarities, but she wanted them to do a little bit more critical thinking, so she had them do the, the differences, okay, let's do this next one. After class, reads several versions of, oh, I used to teach this exact with my high school students, um, of several versions of a fairy tale Cinderella. The teacher has students write an essay comparing and contrasting their two favorite versions. The activity will benefit students' comprehension primarily by having them synthesize information from multiple texts, reread the text with appropriate prosody, you know what that meaning is? Okay, um, evaluate a variety of text structures, practice metacognitive skills. So after a class reads several versions of Fairy Tale Cinderella, the teacher has the students write an essay comparing and contrasting their two favorite versions. The activity will benefit students' comprehension by having them.
I would say A or C.
That's what I would say as well, A or C. But we only have them do two stories at the end, and most fairy tale versions are the same text structure, they're the same genre. So they're just gonna be getting different. They're the same genre, so they're just gonna be getting different prose, different short stories about it. I would say.
A?
A would be the best.
Thinking.
Let's see.
I'm still confused, why is it not C? Evaluate a variety of text structures, cuz I think, okay, evaluating.
Variety is more than one, but in the end, the activity is just two and that's a pair. So a variety would be like more than two, I think. Three, which was all the verse, several versions that we read, but then the teacher asked them for the activity to just choose two.
Okay, you see.
It's ridiculous. I mean, you know, because. Evaluating the variety of text would be. Comprehension strategies and an activity in reading comprehension, but with their little smaller. Task of the essay, I think that's what, but let's see what they say. Okay, so because comparing and contrasting text requires students to synthesize information, which leads to an in-depth. Understanding of the text. Okay, so that makes sense. C was incorrect because while students may discuss elements of text structure in their essay. Writing essay will not necessarily help them evaluate a variety of text structures. Got it?
The key, the key word was variety, meaning more than two.
Right.
Well, I would have not kept that one. That would have been like five minutes and just that question.
Okay, but wait, so when you do that, move on to the next one and go back to that one later.
Yeah.
And it's only the Engli- like for me, the English part, like I remember the first time I took it, I was like. I don't know a lot of the words that they're using.
Right.
So after studying, I was able to, you know, connect a lot and I'm like, oh, I recognize this and that.
Yes, and so. I'm sorry, guys, the they're delivering pizza. So yes, that's that's where those TIC studies come really handy, so um. Some of the students that do them become so fluent that when they're writing their lesson plans, they're like, I remember that TIC blah blah blah. They're all. Fancy with it now, but it really helps you just to know the language that they're gonna throw out to you on the test. Which is very specific, okay. Students are learning to analyze characters using the following graphic organizer. So this is tasking us with characterization. Describe the character's feelings during one point of the story. Describe the actions. Why did they feel that way? What do you think caused that? What other characters, did the characters remind you of? What was one of the most important things a character said? Why is this important? Okay. So when completing the graphic organizer, students will primarily practice which of the following study and inquiry skills? Previewing various text features.
No, previewing is previewing, like you're viewing it before.
Before.
So previewing text features is what we might do maybe with an expository text, like if they included graphs or pictures or the title. We might take a look at those things that they have for us on the those text features. To add to our understanding before we start reading. Any pictures that they. Included in the reading are gonna be important for our understanding. Previewing those things might help us in our under- reading comprehensions, but that's a. Um a different, a different thing. So locating important textual information, that might be. Making predictions. This is an activity that's done after we're reading, so it's gonna be a post-reading activity, not a pre-reading activity. Sequencing the events of the text. This doesn't ask.
No.
Things at all. I would say.
B.
B is the best answer.
The textual information.
Yes. Yes, that is the correct, oh, girls, will you excuse me just a second? B is the right answer. I'm gonna put you on nineteen and you guys read that next, do do nineteen together, I'll be right back.
Okay. The graphic organizer will best help students develop which of the following skills?
Was that what we're, the one previous to the nineteen, was it a, was it a graphic organizer?
Yes.
So then you.
Already, they, that one you have to read what is written next to the graphic organizer.
Will best help the students develop which is.
I already kinda have an idea what it is. It's not language decoding, cuz they're not decoding language.
No. It has to do with comprehension.
Uh I would, and it's not D, it's not fluency. They're not reading word for word, they're not learning new words, so they're not, nothing. On on D tampoco.
No.
E?
Or C.
Okay, so the graphic organizer will best help students develop which of the following skills? Inferential comprehension, language decoding, contextual comprehension, and reading fluency, so. Right away, language coding and reading fluency don't work for me.
Uh huh, we're with A and C, so infer.
Inferential means we're making inferences.
Infering, right?
Where, yeah, where in referring.
Contextual comprehension is within the context of the text, so just. I told you, I just don't see the car, baby. That's ridiculous, I'm sorry. We thought the pizza man was here, the dogs were going crazy and apparently he parked down the street, you didn't see him, and I don't know if he left for the pizza. So describe the character's feelings during one point of the story. Why did the character feel this way?
I don't.
What do you think caused the act? So that is inferring. Why is it important? We're guessing we're making inferences again.
So it would be A? Because they're asking us, right? Like what was one important thing, so.
Describe the character's feelings during one point of the story. Why did the character feel that way? Okay, I would say because we're asking, we're doing this inferential i- inferring. I would say, but we are, but see, this is so minutely confusing because, and I have a.
The question at the top, right?
What?
It's the question at the top. That's kinda confusing, before it even asked the inferencing question.
Yes.
That's the way I would have messed up on this question. I would have looked at the first question and not at the second one.
Right. Well, and the first question has us look at the text itself, but let's see. Bite the bullet and see what it says.
It's cuz contextual would be on the text, right?
Yeah.
But no, it's that, like the questions where it says on top, it says, what did the character feel? Why did it feel? So we're gonna infer like.
Okay, so it's a context. Comprehension was about context clues. I wasn't, I was even thinking about it in the wrong way. This is about. Comprehending through context clues, so that was out completely. I thought it was within the context of the story.
That's what I thought too.
Uh I suppose algo diferente, that's talking about.
Yeah.
So we would have been super off. So in this way, that wasn't even like the second best choice, but I'm glad. In the end, we went with that where. The bigger learning task of the activity would be the inferencing, that second question and and making those important. Um connections past the, past the story. Which is, which is why when, on the day of the test, I do it myself, I skim over all fast. I didn't even read the second question the first time I read it through. I went back and read it the second time.
Yes.
But it's all important, so we need to make sure that you go back and you take a look at it, cuz they gave it to you. It'd be tricky and chances are, there's something there that will give you the clue for the right answer. Always, there's something there that will give you the clue for the right answer.
I went by because the why on.
Why?
Just why on two of them that it had, like it's like you're inferring, like why? Did the character feel that way?
Did the pizza come, guys? Okay, good.
That's what I had for dinner. That's why I had to mute.
Okay. Okay, which of the following activities would best help students develop magne cognitive skills? Okay, using a gra- graphic organizer to write a summary of the story. Completing the graphic organizer with a partner and then sharing with a small group. Referring to the graphic organizer while reading and writing stories individually. Creating another graphic organizer that uses the same concept as the graphic organizer presented here.
I don't think D would be.
Yeah. Cuz it's, it's, you're creating the same thing, it's a. I would say.
But because it says help develop students meta cognitive. It would be. I don't think it would be A. A is not it, because it says write a summary of the story. That's like.
That's just one assignment. Well, so with a partner, you're getting help. Meta cognitive skills means, like, the way I remember it. Is where you're able to do two tasks on your own. Is that a good way to think of it like that? Yes, it's like a multitasking cognition.
Multitask.
Meta.
Oh, come on, I wanted to show you the thing, oh, let me see.
Meta cognitive, me too.
Yes.
Basically what women do every day.
Yes, all our lives, every.
Multitask.
Multitask.
Yes, it's like when I go grocery shopping, I wanna get all the bags down at once. And be on the phone and everything.
How we do it, I uh awareness and understanding of one's own thought processes. So it's your thought process going through the steps.
So it would be B?
Aware of their. Of their own thought process.
Oh.
While reading and writing stories. Yeah.
So by by himself, right? So it's C?
I think it's C.
Individually.
Individually.
Yeah, cuz the other one says uh sharing it with a small group.
Yeah, of one's own thought process, yeah, but. Just because someone's there doesn't mean you're not doing metacognition. You can tell someone.
Uh huh. Back where it says higher order thinking skills, right there.
Knowing about knowing.
Yes, thinking about thinking, knowing about knowing, like how am I thinking, what's my thought process, what am I thinking about my thi- thinking about your thinking? Metacognition is thinking about one's thinking. So with that said. With a partner and then sharing with a small group. The sharing might mean you have to explain and thinking about your thinking, but I don't know, because that's what throws me off. The sharing.
Yeah, I I would.
And it would, no, you know what, the pa- the partner is not by itself. You're not doing it by yourself if you were the partner.
And that definitely starts thinking about one's thinking, so your person only, yes.
Yeah, because the other one, you're actually doing it, you're sharing it with someone else, like.
What if they create the graphic organizer, but they ask different questions? Is that what they're?
Oh, I got, I got a meaning here. It says meta, it's over cognition thinking, so literally thinking over. One's own thought processes.
So basically, what we do in a test?
Yeah, cuz it says.
What we're doing right now, thinking about our thinking and the thinking about our thinking.
Yeah, it says students must be able to explain where they got their ideas or how they know a thing might happen next. Reread the text.
That's deep thinking.
It's cuz I did, it is?
Yep. Right?
Meta.
Yeah.
What question?
What number is it?
Oh, no, it's C. Oh, yeah, you're right.
Oh, students are writing to.
With a partner does not develop the student's own thinking, so that was the catch. When you speak about it, you can talk about your own thinking, but if you work on it with a partner. That wasn't your own thinking to begin with, that you even took to the group to share, so that's not. Metacognition, so you were right with C. That was by themselves, that they were doing the more than thinking about the different types of thinking, that they were, they were thinking. About their reading while doing the writing.
So the key word would be students own thinking, higher order thinking skills. So the other one, I wrote it down in my notes. I'm gonna have to make sure I know that one. Thinking about one's thinking and higher order thinking and student's own thinking. Metacognition. I'm sure that word's gonna come out, I'm sure.
Yes, it will.
So metacognition is thinking about your thinking process.
So just meta, meta itself, it's over.
It's over the top.
So then cognition is thinking.
The way that we learn to get smarter is by analyzing ourselves through self-reflection. That's why meditating works, that's why prayer works, give you time to like think about your thinking and what reflects. So metacognition asks you to, the student to do that, to think about their thought process. We, we're doing that right now as we're going through the different answer choices and saying, okay. This is why in my mind, I said this and that, we're actually, you're acting out our metacognition as we speak. And enhancing. Yes, that's right. On a Wednesday evening, on Wednesday evening, okay. Although students in a middle school science class are able to glean specific facts from their chapter textbook. They are unable to read the the broad concepts presented in the reading. Which of the following activities should the teacher have the students do first to address this issue? So middle school science class. They get the te- they, so they aren't able to understand the broad concepts, the summarization of the main ideas. Is what they're having difficulty with. You cannot summarize the main concept, so. Um defining the important vocabulary words in the chapter. Um rereading the chapter loud with a partner. Discussing their favorite part of the chapter, so. We want for them to be able to restate broad concepts. In the, in the reading, so in order to address that, which of these would best do that?
I would say A or D.
Other thing, they're able to restate broad concepts.
So broad concepts, to me, in my mind, I just read summary already. Like if I'm trying to tell you a broad concept, I'm just trying to give you a summary of the concept that I'm familiar with.
Summarizing the main ideas in the chapter.
Cuz they're not picking their favorite part. It doesn't even mention they have a favorite part.
Right.
Reading the chapter out loud with a partner, well, they're still.
And that might not even be useful for them to understand the main concepts, because then they're only choosing one part and that might not be a main concept. It might have been about, you know, turtles have slime, but that's like not super important. That was your favorite part and they might go on that one, so that might not even help them. With learning the broader uh concepts.
Yeah, I would say A. I I don't. Summarizing the main ideas. After, they are, they are unable to restate the broad concepts presented in the reading.
Yeah, because the other one says defining important vocabulary words in the chapter. I don't think that one.
Vocabulary.
Well, as a teacher, what I would do if I were having this, I would have them summarize the main ideas off to the side where the, the, the text is. As we read, chunking the text, what was the, that summary of that little, that little section?
Kind of like paraphrase, right?
That's exactly what it is, it's exactly what it is. So. The A is the correct answer because summarizing the text would be the teacher's best first step. Obviously, there's other things that you must continue to do, but to getting them to even start thinking about the main ideas, because they're gonna have to start. Assessing what's important in the text and what's not in order to summarize it, so. Um let me see, which was the one that maybe we thought was a something?
I thought it was D. I don't know.
Okay, right, so, so what I said, discussing their favorite part of the textbook will not necessarily direct the students towards a broad concept, so. Well, that might be a good discussion starter or or activity. It is a good activity for the classroom. But for, for increasing their ability to reset state broad concepts, not for that one.
Yeah.
What's, okay. Mister Marcos decides to utilize reading journals with his students to increase their interest in reading. To accomplish the goal, it will be most. To accomplish the goal, it will be most effective for students to use the journals for which of the following activities? So he wants.
Interest in reading.
He wants to in, increase their interest in reading, that's the goal. Taking notes about the main ideas of the text, recording personal reactions. Responding to the prompt about the text or summarizing a passage, now. Discussing the favorite part of the chapter, this would be the my way of getting them to talk about or interested, choose the part that's your favorite. Um.
The prompt, wouldn't that be writing, no?
Yes. The prompt is writing, responding to the prompt, recording personal reactions is also.
Good one, I had no idea that one. A prompt shouldn't even even be there.
No.
I would say B. Cuz they're not finding out the main ideas, he just wants them to become interested in reading.
Exactly, so he's just trying to hook them, he just wants them to get excited, tell me anything you liked or you didn't like about it, reactions, good or bad?
Yeah. What they, yeah, what they liked and did.
Okay, so B is the correct strategy because it allows students to interact with the text, so you're not asking them only enjoy it. You might see in their reading journals, I hate this character, he's awful, or this is whatever. But you want them to be an active participant and to understand that. Maybe they won't always jive with what they're reading, but we can still engage with it and learn from it, and so that's the point in the interest in learning. Um. Okay, oh my god, I went over the time, okay, ladies, I am going to, where are we, we still have a lot more to go, right? When are y'all? It's seven thirty, I didn't realize we went past the twenty. When do you guys take it?
Next Saturday.
I take it in a month, so the quicker the better, I don't mind, the more we meet, the better.
Okay, well.
Yes.
Weekend, when do you take it, Rachel?
Saturday, in the afternoon.
This coming Saturday?
No, next Saturday, the twenty third.
Because if you want, next Wednesday, we could do another session and go over some more questions. You guys can have some time to do some more study.com stuff, take a look at the other things and then. Uh, maybe like the next ones all like pop out to you a little bit, uh, quicker and we'll look at some of the memetric, memetrix ones as well.
Okay.
Okay, so I will schedule us for, um. Six o'clock next Wednesday on the twentieth?
Okay.
All right, okay, so, um. What I want for you guys to do is just to continue with the TIC study, really focus on highlighting anything maybe you don't. And, and don't let it, don't feel bad, I, I like everything, if you have to write little notes, you should have seen the ones that I did whenever, when I went in for mine, I just. There was so much stuff written on there.
Yes.
The more you do, the better, little hacks, meta, overthinking, extra thinking, more than thinking, like any little things to help you remember those things. Um, work on that between now and next Wednesday and then we will, I think we left off, we'll start off on page, on, on question.
Twenty-three, right, we left off?
Yes, twenty-three.
Twenty-three, there you go, we'll start off on twenty-three and then we'll do some of the. My toddlers are back, the parties. My three and my two-year-old, oy. Um, so we will start there and then we'll go, we'll just go through those and, um, Rachel, we're, you're gonna do it, remember positive thinking. We're gonna pass it.
Yes.
And I'll take a look at the science stuff and then we'll, 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 uh, we'll look at some of those questions too.
Okay, okay, appreciate it.
Okay, sounds, you guys have a.
You too, thank you.
Yes, of course. Bye-bye.
Bye.